Welcome back to Fast Times. My name's Adam Nathan.
And I'm Tom Wolfe.
And today, we've taken a field trip down to Southern California to speak with the Los Angeles City Councilwoman for District 11, Tracy Park, who's here with us today. She represents a sprawling district on the west side of Los Angeles, stretching from the Pacific Palisades down to LAX. About 260,000 Angelenos. She's fiercely independent, has been a stalwart for progress on homelessness, and she led her district through the aftermath of the tragic fires up in the Palisades earlier this year. And she's up for reelection next year. And so today, we're going to talk to Tracy about her plans for the district, what she's most proud of over the last four years of her term, as well as what she sees as the work ahead on both the local and national crises that affect Los Angeles and California, on homelessness, addiction, the fire response to come, and also housing affordability. Thank you for being here today, Tracy.
Thank you so much for having me. It's really good to see you both.
We're big fans of yours, but as we were talking about earlier, politics is a tough job. So I just want to start from the beginning. What inspired you to get into politics in the first place?
Never in a million years did I expect to do this. You know, I was just an everyday resident in LA, living my life, minding my own business. But I was also a resident of Venice. And I had watched my neighborhood become the epicenter of the homelessness crisis outside of Skid Row. And I had become increasingly frustrated with what was either complete ineptitude or a lack of willingness to address the problems. We had a council member that wasn't just absent, but overtly hostile towards his constituents. There was just a complete absence of community collaboration and public trust. And so, you know, I decided I can either sit behind my keyboard complaining about this, or I could step up and do something about it. And I thought with my 20 years of experience as an attorney who worked with cities on big issues all over California, I had a perspective about, you know, things that had worked and not worked in other communities. And so I decided to throw my, my name in the ring. And here I am, all of these years later. And what a wild ride it has been.
It has, because I remember I met you 2021, when you were, I had come down here to Venice to actually check out the homeless problem. You know, up in San Francisco, we're no strangers to homeless, homelessness and the drug crisis, et cetera. And what I saw down here was absolutely staggering. It was astounding, the blocks upon blocks of tents, like on Rose and near Gold's Gym, and the, the open drug scene and everything that was happening in front of the bridge shelter. And the RVs, that's another thing, that's like almost a whole separate topic that we have to talk to you about was the RVs around the Biona Wetlands, et cetera, and its impacts on that area, the environmental impacts on that. And then to come back, last year, I came back, actually a couple of times last year, to see you. And we walked Venice together, and it was like night and day. And it was like, where did everybody go? And I found out that you got a lot of people inside, which is great. Some people left of their own accord, which is okay. But the neighborhood has been kind of restored, I guess you could say.
It is an incredible comeback story. I mean, it, 2020, 2021, and 2022, Venice had just devolved into absolute chaos and lawlessness. It had just become an absolute dystopian nightmare over here. There was not a single neighborhood in this tiny little three-square-mile community that wasn't horrifically impacted by widespread, unregulated, unserviced encampments. And that was happening all over the west side of Los Angeles. And, you know, when I took office, that was the top-of-mind issues for voters here in Council District 11, but all over the city. And we changed a few things right out of the gate. We immediately got with all of our embedded service providers. And it was immediately apparent that they had been operating in silos, no direction or leadership, no defined mission that they were all working together to achieve, clearly no accountability. So as we got to know them and learn their functions and skillsets and jurisdictions where they worked, we finally brought everybody into the room and said, we're going to start rolling as a team. We are all going to start our days together and roll together out and do our missions and operations, and we're going to start returning as a team. We've actually embedded some of those service providers and LOSA directly in my council office, so that we are physically present with each other. And we methodically, strategically, started to address the largest encampments, one by one by one, by offering interim housing and services. And I have also been very, very liberal in, you know, the limited tools that I have available to me, including our city's Safe Schools and Parks Ordinance, which is Section 4118 of our municipal code, that allows us to prohibit tent encampments around limited certain sensitive use sites, schools, parks, daycares, libraries, and homeless shelters. And so as we've done these interventions and offered folks an alternative, we have rolled those out and been very, very effective in managing our public spaces. And we have actually helped more than 700 people who were previously living in tents and vehicles get off the streets into safer settings. That is more than my predecessor did in a decade before me, two and a half short years.
Yeah, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk about national Democrats and why we keep losing elections. And a lot of people say it's because they don't want the country to be like California, whether it's Los Angeles or San Francisco. And what that means, I think, is that Democrats have failed to deliver on results, whether it's on homelessness, or housing, or, or better jobs, or affordable living. You just talked about a lot of the stuff you did, which is super impressive. But I've watched your videos over the last couple of weeks preparing for this. And it seems like your perspective on how to govern is also different. Is there something about your secret sauce? Like, how have you been able to produce results here in a way that is seemingly other districts in Los Angeles, but also where we're from in San Francisco have in over the last couple of years?
Well, I think in terms of my governing style, I am very clear. I report to my constituents, not the interests in City Hall, period. And that clearly defines what my role is, and that is to achieve the outcomes and the policy changes that they want to see in their, in their community. And so I think that in and of itself has been a huge shift in the leadership style in the district. I am very, very collaborative with my communities. You know, I don't have a preset agenda for them. Their agenda is my agenda. They hired me to be their advocate and their ally in City Hall. And my role here is to advance those priorities and those agendas. What I can tell you, though, is that the things that my constituents are sharing with me here on the west side are the same things that every resident of the city of Los Angeles is talking about. And as we have changed the policies and approaches here on the west side, you know, previously, you know, open-air drug camps were allowed everywhere. We had a member that wanted to defund and abolish our police department, who didn't want any level of enforcement on our streets. And we saw the outcome. Literally, Venice devolved into total lawlessness and chaos. And I think that we have demonstrated what responsible governance looks like, compassionate interventions coupled with regulating our public spaces. And frankly, I think we have set the bar citywide for what constituents ought to expect from their council members.
I think that's been one of the challenges, right? So, you know, my background, you know, I'm formerly homeless, I'm in recovery from addiction, and I've become a really outspoken advocate. You know, and some people say, oh, it's because I'm calling for more law enforcement and more accountability. No, I'm calling for a balanced approach, where we're, yes, we recognize that housing is an issue, but we also have to be frank about the drug issue.
Yes.
And that's something that historically has been downplayed as part of the overall crisis. And voices like yours seem to still be in the minority in California politics, in general, in California governance, in general. We have, you know, the mayor of San Francisco is now singing a different tune, talking more about accountability and recognizing that there is a drug crisis amongst the homeless population. The mayor of San Jose, you're down here doing it. How do we convince more elected leaders, especially in California, that we need to, in my opinion, in my estimation, treat both issues equally? And that homelessness is a housing issue, but yes, homelessness is also a drug addiction problem, and we need to actually fund resources to address both things.
Well, Tom, it's a great question. And I just want to commend you. I think your story and your journey are just indicative of so many of those problems and challenges. And the work that you have done and the leadership that you have brought to this issue, I think, has really framed it in a way that people can understand. You know, for a long, long time, the only narrative you ever heard out of the political establishment anywhere in California was that our homelessness problem was a housing problem. And to some extent, for people who may lose their home because of financial circumstances, unexpected job loss, or medical bills, or other reasons, there is a different type of intervention that may be necessary to get that sort of a person stabilized and hopefully immediately rehoused. And there was no recognition built in anywhere of the widespread behavioral health component to this. But I do think, Tom, in recent years, because of leaders like you and Mayor Lurie and Mayor Mahan, helped me here, trying to change the narrative, we are starting to see more acknowledgement of the addiction and mental health components. I am hearing other elected officials acknowledging it and talking about it now. I think that we are starting to see, and I know you've had some good examples of this up in San Francisco, more recovery based interventions. Here in Los Angeles, we haven't quite caught up with that, at least on the government-funded side. And for some reason, we continue to be a few clicks behind San Francisco when it comes to leading and innovating on these, on these issues. But the reality is, if we don't address the underlying mental health and addiction issues, we aren't going to solve this problem. So we've housed over 700 people who were previously living on the streets. Everybody that wanted help, everybody that was sane enough and sober enough to say yes to help when it was offered, we already got them. We've got those folks stabilized and well on, on their pathways. We are predominantly now in my council district, dealing with a very high acuity population of individuals. And when I see the condition that they are in and the conditions they are living in, I think to myself, I need a hospital and a medical doctor for a long-term care plan, supervised care plan. And we still don't have the legal mandates that we need to force the issues with that population, nor do we have the sobriety and recovery-based backend infrastructure that we need to catch those folks and get them the appropriate type of intervention.
And what we're finding is that a lot of that has to do with statewide policy. It's not necessarily an LA thing, or a San Francisco thing. There's things like mental health diversion programs that came out of the state that were well-intended, right, to give people an opportunity to access treatment and services as opposed to being incarcerated. But we find that that has, depending on the jurisdiction that you're in, has been kind of taken advantage of in certain situations. So you see a lot, a lot of people that maybe should be going to treatment are actually just getting released back into the street. And that's not helping anyone. It's not helping that individual. It's not helping the community, and certainly not helping the community.
Well, and that's right. And, you know, unfortunately, Prop 47 is an example of that. There's, you know, other bad ballot measures and legislation that have contributed to this. But, you know, when we took what used to be felony-related narcotics crimes and, you know, downgraded those to misdemeanors, there's nothing left to plea bargain to require people into those mandated treatment and diversion programs. And so that, you know, not that a nudge from a judge or court mandated, you know, recovery works for everyone, but it works for some people. And once that tool went away, and with it, a legal pathway to force the issue, we lost that as one of the tools in the toolkit. Prop 36 tries to resurrect some of that. And, you know, I find it remarkable that, you know, that piece of legislation that was about, you know, some of the basic, most obvious issues that we're facing around the state of California passed in every single county, unheard of, across political lines, because people recognize the need for what you're talking about, Tom, the accountability. And that is something that has been absent from the housing interventions and the policies out of Sacramento, the money being tethered to Housing First, and, you know, no barrier to entry, no requirement to participate in the programming being made available, or to actually get stabilized and avail yourself of the opportunities that are being provided.
And Prop 36 didn't have the support of the, of the state's political establishment for much of the run. It was like an insurgent proposition by...
And it's frustrating to me now that, you know, the governor is declining to fund it at a time where I think there is, you know, broadening acceptance that we need to have some additional tools in the toolkit. You know, we also just passed Prop 1 that provided all of this new funding. And at the same time, we have Senate Bill 43, which broadens the definition of gravely disabled, that, you know, could lead to mandated care for some individuals with serious mental health issues set to go into effect at the end of this year. In LA County, those types of diversion programs are, you know, all run through the county of Los Angeles. They only have until the end of the year to get those systems set up. And so, you know, I think just, you know, a stubborn refusal to fund the programs, rather than acknowledging, we have a real need for this, and these are investments that we have to make if we are holistically going to solve the homelessness and related addiction crisis on the streets.
Yeah, you're super nuts and bolts as a legislator. And, but I just want to pull up for a second, because we, we live in a progressive state. I think there's still a lot of, let's say, emotional overhang on this issue, where there are folks within your party, our party, who say, hey, you are criminalizing homelessness, you are attacking a vulnerable population, and indeed, you are facing an opponent in your reelection who, I think, wants to take your district back to pre-2022, pre-2022 times, when there was open-air drug use, and the streets were a mess. And as you said, there was kind of lawlessness everywhere. What would you say, though, to voters in your district that are emotionally sympathetic to this idea that we shouldn't be criminalizing homelessness?
No, I think it lacks empathy to leave people who are not well enough to take care of themselves or make good decisions on their behavves, sick and dying in piles of garbage on the side of the road. Because that's frankly what their policies command. It isn't about criminalizing homelessness. It is about ensuring that people are getting care that they need. And, you know, here in CD11, we always lead with offers of services and shelter. When we do a major intervention, and we have to tell people, you can't be in a certain location, we always do. We are down now to a population of individuals on the streets in my council district who have all been offered services and other places to go, other housing arrangements, again, and again, and again. And they won't go. And so there are some other unique challenges. Those may be mental health-related, they may be addiction-related, they may be other issues there. But we have got to have a full range of tools available to us to make sure that people are getting what they need. I am sorry, but leaving the conditions the way they are is not acceptable to anyone. And I can't think of any other medical condition where we would just leave people on the side of the road and look the other way. And yet, as a matter of policy, that is what my opponent and people like my predecessor in this seat advocated. And we saw in real time how catastrophic those results were.
Well, it's just absolutely insane to me that people think that that status quo is compassionate, or empathetic, or progressive in any sense of the term, because it's not, it's not compassionate to that person, it's not compassionate to the community. And yeah, I think you're totally right on this.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I feel like controversy around the subject is completely manufactured.
Right.
Go, go ask a parent who has a child who's an addict or has a serious mental health condition and ask them how they feel.
Right.
Go ask neighbors that have to live with drug camps in their front yards, and their kids can't ride their bikes. It's not fair to anybody.
I found it ironic that, you know, we have, we call it behavioral health, right? So what we're really talking about here is behavior, right? So when you're exhibiting negative behavior on the street as a result of untreated mental illness, or addiction, right, substance use disorder, whatever you want to call it, it's the behaviors that need to be addressed. And so for those, like you said, the ones that aren't exhibiting those negative behaviors, that have motivation to get off the street, have been helped. And the ones that have, are struggling with their behavioral health, aren't. And so that's not criminalization at all. That's actually just addressing behavior through behavioral health. And part of that behavioral health happens to also sometimes include law enforcement as part of the response, because whether we like it or not, and this is across the country nationwide, 80% of all homeless outreach that's done on the street is still done by the police. So unless we want to invest in those alternatives, which I'm open to, who isn't, right? We have to still give them the tools and the resources to be able to respond effectively and humanely to the people that are on the street.
And I want to be very clear, nobody, and not me, want to criminalize people because of poverty, or they don't have somewhere to go, or because they have some type of medical or disability condition. Nobody wants that. But there are approaches that we can use with folks where the consequence is the diversion, supervised diversion with consequences for violating the terms. Doesn't have to be jail, but it does need to be in a setting. And yeah, it might be supervised. There may be various levels of restrictiveness to it, depending on the individual and the underlying circumstances. Until that person is well enough to be able to participate in meaningful ways in the decisions and the planning, we've got to be able to have those difficult conversations. But when you go out and you ask average people who live in our community if they think it is somehow wrong, or unethical, or a violation of people's rights to ensure that they get the care that they need, there's no controversy at all, really.
I liked what you said before about regulating and managing our public spaces. And you're coming on fairness. I've heard you say before that the grass is literally greener now on Venice Beach than it was, and how you're balancing compassion for those on the street with, with kind of the, the public settings that we all deserve. I think that's what people expect from their elected officials. And I think, you know, you're, no one wants to, when they're walking their kids to school, or they're going out for a sunset run with their dog, be, be in a community that's not up to their standards. And I think that also gets to seeing an RV that's parked outside of your home permanently, you know, for, for months or years on end, where people are using drugs or having a mental health crisis. We were walking around Venice before and saw the signs that you put up in your, in the neighborhoods around the restrictions on overnight use of cars. I'm curious, this feels like a huge win for you that came early in your term. Can you talk about kind of what inspired that and what, what impact it had on the community?
Well, as I said, I've been really very liberal in my use of the tools that I have available to me. So obviously, with our, you know, Safe Schools and Parks Ordinance, I've been able to use that to protect key sensitive locations. And we've also done a lot of work around the vehicle interventions. Frankly, we have been so successful here in Council District 11, we have almost no tent encampments left. It is a very relatively small population compared to other parts of the city. Our primary issue at this point is vehicle dwelling. And that has been a much harder kettle of fish, actually. For a lot of folks who are in the RVs, that is home. Their belongings are there, their pets are there. In some cases, they may provide mobility. A whole bunch of them couldn't possibly pass a basic operability, environmental, or fire safety inspection, but some of them may provide mobility. And convincing people to give them up to go into interim housing, which, you know, primarily our inventory here are motel rooms, has been very, very challenging. However, we have brought on new resources to help with that. We have a service provider that specializes in vehicle dwelling. And we were able to work with them just recently to clear an encampment around a school in Playa Vista that had been concerning for a while. And we had a really, really high level of success when we cleared the encampment that you mentioned before, off of Jefferson Boulevard along our Biona Wetlands. And for those who may not be familiar with it, a lot of what is now Marina Del Rey in Venice and Playa Del Rey used to be coastal marshlands. And we are down to our last 300 remaining acres. It is a tiny little postage stamp square of coastal wetlands. And it is just critical habitat for birds and fish and other species, a beloved part of our district that environmentalists fought for decades to preserve. And, you know, my predecessor allowed this 65 RV encampment to persist there four years, completely unregulated, without any level of services. The amount of garbage and debris that accumulated was just sickening to see. The freshwater marsh was being used as a toilet. Once we had finished our housing interventions and removed the RVs, the condition of the roadway was a sight to see. It looked like small electronic appliances had just exploded everywhere, bits of plastic and wires and nuts and screws and metal, and thousands and thousands of cigarette butts. We were heading into a hurricane at that time. And I was so worried that all of that was just going to wash right into the wetlands and out to the ocean. So we had to bring in special street sweeping services just to clean the debris out of the roadway. We had to remove all of the topsoil along the Jefferson Trail. But we have since planted, we've replaced all the soil, we've planted 1,000 native species out there. The wildlife has returned. We have completely restored the trail. It is now reopened to the public. And we are about to get a protected bike lane on Jefferson Boulevard, which will not only protect that area from anyone parking there in the future, but it's going to provide connectivity between two of my communities that haven't had that before. So we are just really excited overall, because my mission when I took this job was to leave my district better than I found it. It's never going to be perfect, but it is going to be better through the work that my team and I are doing.
Okay, so I just have to ask you one question about the RV thing, because I remember it was in the news a lot. And then, and then we're going to ask you about the Palisades Fire, because that's really like a huge thing. But I remember, like, it was in the news and all over social media, people taking videos of the Biona Wetlands and, and all the RVs parked out there. And there was a ton, it seemed like at the time, there was a lot of resistance to removing those RVs. And it wasn't, and I think there was just a lot of misunderstandings about what, what was to be done about that. Because you have, you know, obviously, some people are in the community angry, like, they just need to move. But you were actually there and preparing a plan to offer people services, offer people interim housing, offering addiction treatment, whatever the services that they need. Can you tell us a little bit about some of that resistance? Or it's more like, who? I guess at the time, they were the ones kind of controlling the narrative on homelessness. And I say they loosely, because it's a, it's a whole group of, of kind of the more progressive left sometimes, and sorry, I'm being kind of frank about that, DSA, some of those folks that are kind of the more radicalized harm reduction folks. Well, I'll just call it what it is, because I duke it out with them all the time, as you well know. What kind of resistance did you meet? And how did you really overcome that?
Let me preface this by saying, you know, I felt as though I was elected with a mandate for my residents to get that mess cleaned up and put an end to the environmental degradation that was going on in that state-designated environmentally sensitive habitat area. Yeah, there's a very small minority of noisy activists, some of which comes from CD11, a lot of which is noise from other parts of the city and beyond, who are of the opinion that until you can provide a brick-and-mortar home for every one of these individuals, they have every right to just be wherever they want, for as long as they want, behaving however they want, and causing as much harm as they want. And that, I'm sorry, I'm not going to put up with that. Our constituents and residents shouldn't have to put up with that. That is not an outcome or a policy position that we can reasonably tolerate. That was a difficult intervention. There was a lot of high acuity issues. Um, that was a a difficult intervention. There was a lot of high acuity issues there. A lot of service resistant folks. Uh, but we were really, really proud of the individuals that we were able to get uh, into housing immediately. And we continued to work with some of those folks out of those RVs for at least a year after we did that intervention. And so our numbers there have just continued to tick up. And, you know, I I I, to the critics, no reasonable sane person looking at the devastation that was being done there, the fires that they were causing, the pollution and the damage, the overdoses, the shootouts, and think that that was acceptable. So I I don't know what else to tell them.
Uh, yeah, just on on this topic of uh, cleaning up the mess and taking out the trash, I want to talk about the budget in City Hall. Uh, we have a lot of politicos and policy wonks who listen in. Um, uh, and, you know, there's the the corruption in Los Angeles and City Hall has been in the news media constantly. You're one of three uh, people on the City Council to vote against the budget. I think you called it a bottomless pit of spending. Why did you care so much about this issue?
Twenty twenty-five has been a rough year on a lot of fronts. And we were talking about cutting over a thousand critical city jobs, reductions to our core municipal services, our staffing at the police department, our sanitation teams, the teams that we need to fix our streets and our our sidewalks. All of that had w- w- was set to be on the chopping block during this budget cycle. And when you look around LA and you see our broken sidewalks and our pothole-riddled streets and our crumbling infrastructure everywhere and the decades of neglect and failure to prioritize the essentials in favor of spending billions of dollars year after year on the same failed approaches and programs and service providers and outcomes year after year that have gotten us nowhere. I I I I mean, we are spending a billion dollars outright of our city budget on one half of one percent of our population. And that is not including our general fund dollars that PD spends dealing with homelessness, that the fire department spends dealing with homelessness, that our libraries spend dealing with homelessness, that Wreckin Parks spend dealing with it, that Bureau of Street Lighting spends replacing all the pilfered wiring and metals. It literally touches and taxes and burdens and depletes every single resource in the city. So instead of taking a different approach and deciding to hold folks accountable, getting a divorce from the service providers that have continued to fail year after year, we were talking about cutting essential services. And I I I've had it. I've had it. I've had it with not being able to give my constituents the basic quality of life things that they need to thrive and to stay invested in this city while a handful of folks ruin everything for everyone else. It's got to stop.
Amen.
Amen. Wow. Uh, yes, you need you need to be reelected and uh, sky is the limit for you on that. Okay, so we 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 got to ask you about the Palisades Fire. And um, like we were watching um, in horror from San Francisco with what was happening, because we're all uh, Californians. Okay, and to watch what was what happened in Malibu and in Pal- Palisades and Altadena, everything was heartbreaking. Nothing, there's nothing short of heartbreaking. Like I I literally had tears in my eyes watching a place that I was just in a month before with my daughter looking at colleges. We were looking colleges, right? You know, and uh, to see that all happen. Um, and have it all be gone. We were up at Pepperdine and remember driving up one to get there. And all of that's like gone. But I also remember seeing you on social media every single day. Like every day, multiple times a day, offering live, real-time updates on the status of the fire, where victims of the fire can go to get services, what services were were being provided, like up-to-the-minute stuff. And it wa- it was really hard to find another leader in LA uh, at that moment that was standing up and offering that kind of uh, transparent leadership. And so I want to say thank you, because it made me as a fellow Californian feel better that that somebody was standing tall at a really hard time. And if you could just tell us a little bit about the challenge, some of the challenges that you faced for that few weeks that that happened. And then maybe tell us about the glimmers of hope that you're seeing now um, with with the redevelopment and what's happening in Palisades.
Yeah. So this year has been really hard. Um, January seventh forever changed Council District eleven and the lives of thousands of residents here. Think a lot of us wish we had a magic wand that we could just go back to January sixth. Um, because what happened on January seventh was so horrific. I was out there most of the afternoon and evening. Uh, my team was too. Uh, they were up in the neighborhoods escorting people out, finding what needed to be done and trying to help. Um, I was down at the Command Center on PCH, watching it all unfold. And, you know, throughout the evening, as reports started to come in about water issues, I I I was hearing that anecdotally. And of course, we didn't have any inventory or assessment about how many structures were lost. But throughout the day and the evening, the narrative had sort of changed from, you know, this is a major incident to numerous structures lost to this is catastrophic. And in my brain in that moment, I thought catastrophic meant we lost twenty homes in the Highlands. I don't even think as I was watching our mobile home communities burn right before the fire jumped PCH, that I even knew what I was looking at. All all the power was out, so all you could just see was walls of fire everywhere. Um, and it was the most horrific, unsettling, terrifying thing I had ever seen. The evacuation was just a chaotic nightmare. People were fleeing out of the Palisades on foot, literally running for their lives. Our fire department had to use bulldozers to get vehicles out of the way to try to get emergency vehicles where they needed to go. The entire thing was just absolutely terrifying. Um, but really, nothing could have prepared me or my team for what we would see on January eighth, when the sun came up. The scope and the scale of the loss and the devastation is just staggering. This beautiful picturesque, engaged, lively, wonderful place just leveled overnight. I'll never forget the sights of that. I will never forget the conversations that I had throughout the night with terrified constituents. The work that we did as a team to immediately get our emergency shelter up and running. The work that we were doing with our local hotels to get their doors opened and people accommodated, checking in with our community leaders to help get word out about places that people could go and the aftermath that followed. The questions, the grief, the outrage, the trauma, the tears, the mistrust, the lack of communication, import- important communication that people needed. And Tom, you mentioned this. From my perspective, people needed to know basics to plan their day. You know, there came a point where they didn't want to know what the percentage of the containment was. They wanted to know how to find their pets. And there was just a huge gap in where and how people could get that information. And so I tried my best to make that my role and to identify what today do people need to know most. And, you know, there is no handbook or training that comes with how to lead a community through something like this. And I think that for me, my presence in the community, bearing witness to the loss, I have not left the Palisades since this happened. I am there uh, multiple times a week to check on things. But I think that my presence there and the genuine confidence that my constituents have in me to have their back has really helped as we've navigated through what has just been completely horrific. But when you ask me about what makes me hopeful, um, this extraordinary community is sticking together and determined to rebuild this community safely and in record time. And I have every confidence that we are going to do this together. We have over two hundred and thirty homes currently under construction, another seven hundred issued permits. They are lining up to break ground and pour their foundations and put their frames up every single day. We have another fifteen hundred permits in the queue in less than a year. That is remarkable. We have plans already underway for the full restoration of our schools, our parks, our library. Those major amenities and assets will all be back or well on their way back by the time the Olympics get here in twenty twenty-eight. I think that probably by the end of our third year, we are going to see some entirely completed streets. Many, many, many more families will have moved back. There will be a recognizable, thriving community living in what is still going to be our biggest construction zone in our city's history. But I I I I am bolstered by who this community is and how determined they are to rebuild this. And I know I still have thousands of people that are mired in uncertainty because they are underinsured and they lack the access to the capital they need to cover the cost of this rebuild. And my obligation is to make sure they are not left behind. And even though the other politicians have to go back to Sacramento and the news cycles shift, I am going to continue to make sure that their stories are told and that they're getting the help and the relief that they need. And that sense of obligation I feel to my constituents and all of the excitement about the work we've done on homelessness, the major forward progress that we're seeing and the excitement about major productions and world events coming to Venice keep me very, very grounded right here in the district and confident overall for the direction we're headed.
And you you provided a real template for leadership in the immediate aftermath of the fires. And it's amazing to hear uh, these likes, these stories of hope and and real tangible progress. It sounds like over fifty percent of the um, structures or these homes that were destroyed uh, in that neighborhood are on their way to get
Not fifty percent. We're 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 not at fifty percent. We're just just over a fifth of folks are accounted for and in the pipeline home.
Okay.
It's not where I want to be. I want it to be a hundred percent. Um, but it is a, I think, a record set. Um, and I, w- we have some issues that we're working through, but I think over these next eighteen months, we are going to continue to see this floodgate.
I'm curious, because that's, that was like, uh, like everyone I I talked to who knew we were coming down to to meet with you asked like, how is it, how are they doing? Like, and and there there hasn't been the kind of, at least that I've seen on the ground reporting about, you know, both the wins as well as the drawbacks. And I'm curious, um, from your perspective, you know, because this will happen again, hopefully not here in District eleven of Los Angeles, but climate change means we will have more natural disasters. Um, and and every seems like everyone provides us a template on, you know, what what to do more of and what to do less of. Where uh, do you think the city or the state or the federal government um, could have done more? Where do you think we can learn from this for the future?
Oh, there's a lot to unpack in there. You're right, climate change is i- i- it's a thing. And, you know, when I look back to January seventh, we can no longer say these are once-in-a-century storms, once-in-a-lifetime weather events, unprecedented. I I I think I even used some language like that early on. But the more I've learned, no, it isn't. This happens all of the time. And what is foreseeable is preventable. Um, here in the Palisades, we had decades of accumulated unmanaged brush on state land where the fire started. And I think the failure of adequate infrastructure and investment in our public safety resources, were on full display for the entire world to see on January seventh. You know, in nineteen twenty-five, Palisades had about a hundred homes. In twenty twenty-four, before the fire, we had just over ten thousand homes and another five thousand public buildings, facilities, schools, things like that. And the Palisades got its first fire station in nineteen sixty-three, its second one in nineteen sixty-nine. And we've never added a firefighter or a fire station since, despite
Wow.
rampant growth spurts after World War Two, another big growth spurt in the nineteen seventies. And then in the nineteen nineties, when we started to push further and further into the urban wild interface, and that growth has continued uh, through last year. But never was there the concurrent investment in the infrastructure that was necessary to support modern demands. And that was true for the water systems, the power grids, the evacuation routes. We have substandard old roads and places in that community where in the old days, where there were houses and cars, you could barely get a sanitation truck through on trash day. You can barely get emergency vehicles through in an actual emergency. And so I tell that story about the Palisades as a cautionary tale of overdevelopment without concurrent investment in the infrastructure needed to support it, because that same story is true in every single neighborhood in the city of Los Angeles.
Uh, yeah, that kind of, we're kind of speechless, because this isn't, this isn't a problem that's central only to Los Angeles. I think we're seeing it across the country with diff- with challenges with our infrastructure. But I I think the Palisades Fire really brought that home for everybody, that we need to do more around it, around creating that infrastructure to support these burgeoning and growing communities throughout the state. Well, Tracy, I I just have to tell you one thing before we close it out. A a sign of a great leader is is how they oftentimes respond in crisis. And uh, the way you responded not only to the homeless crisis, but to what happened in Palisades is truly commendable. Uh, I mean that in all sincerity, um, because we've, we've had a challenge in California with finding strong leaders uh, in times of need. And uh, and to see how you stood up in CD eleven and for for your community during these tough times is a man, I'm not buttering you up. I'm just telling you, that was pretty amazing. So good job. Kudos to you and uh, mad respect.
Thanks, Tom. We've done a lot, but I'm not done.
Awesome.
Well, I just want to, uh, yeah, as kind of a final question, uh, you mentioned twenty twenty-five has been a really tough year. You've had this devastating local crisis. You've had a constitutional crisis with the National Guard here. Uh, you've had citywide crises with the budget. Um, it just feels like it's just been nonstop challenges. Uh, and you're asking for more. So I I'm curious, when you look ahead to your next term, what do you see as the future for uh, District eleven? Why are you running again? What do you want for the people you serve?
Um, serving this community has been the honor of my lifetime. And I came in at a very difficult moment uh, amongst some really unprecedented challenges. And I have been very, very pleased with the progress that we have made. I feel like in some ways, you know, we are single-handedly turning the narrative around what's possible through effective leadership. And I want to continue that work. I want to see it through. The sense of responsibility that I feel to my constituents in the Palisades, to see them further along in their journey home is a very, very heavy responsibility. I am also really excited about the Olympics coming to Venice. Look, I I I I went to war with LA twenty-eight to make this happen. And um, it is a huge opportunity to have Venice back in the headlines for all of the right reasons. It is an opportunity to showcase to the entire world some of our city's most iconic, recognizable around the world assets. And it's something that I really very much want to see through for the community that I live in. And I want to see the progress that we are making And I want to see the progress that we are making in every neighborhood in Council District eleven, happen all over the city. So I'm not, it's not done yet. I'm not done yet.
Well, uh, we are glad to hear that. As as Tom said, I think uh we're starved for real heroes and role models in our politics these days, especially in the Democratic Party. And it's just been a privilege to listen to you and sit with you for this hour. Uh, District eleven, LA, are lucky to have you. Uh, and yeah, thanks for your time. And to everyone else, thanks for joining us on this episode of Fast Times. We'll see you again soon.